Welcome everyone, just bear with me one moment. Change my view here. My apologies. Welcome everyone. This is our first virtual session for parents in the public to provide feedback on high school scenarios. This particular session is for the Central West group of schools, which includes the four schools listed here. My name is Karen Drummond and I'm the manager of community engagement. And we'll start this evening with some introductions and then I'll pass it over to Darlene Anru, Acting Superintendent of School Improvement for some welcoming remarks. In all of these sessions, we're pleased to have members of our Board of Trustees in attendance to hear your perspectives on the high school scenarios. Here with us tonight, we have trustees Althea Adams, Julie Herdlicka, and Trina Herdman. So welcome to you all, pleased to have you here. As well, we have members of the superintendent's team with us at these sessions. As decision makers, they all take an active interest in understanding what's on the minds of all the participants in this initiative, parents, students, staff, and community members. I'm pleased to introduce the team to you. Chris Boosie, Joanne Pittman, Darlene Anru, Dani Breton, Brad Grundy, Rob Armstrong, Kellyanne Fenny, and Marla Martin Esposito. We have several education directors here with us this evening. Some are part of our high school engagement planning team and some represent the schools we are discussing this evening. I'm happy to introduce Lori Cooper, Calvin Davies, David Dick, Michelle Howell, and Teresa Martin. We also have Directors Latosia Campbell Walters and Keith Johnson, Principals Jason Orell, Gord Baldwin, Carneel Cornia, and Myra Hood. We also have Connor McGreech, Deb Hamilton, and a new member of the team Adele Louter. You will hear from some of these subject matter experts here this evening and some you may not. That said, all our education directors, high school principals, and high school engagement planning team members have played an active and important role in this work. Now, I'd like to ask Darlene Anru, Acting Superintendent of School Improvement, to share some opening remarks with us this evening. And just bear with me one moment while I share.
Thanks so much Karen and thank you for joining us this evening for our virtual session discussing the high school scenarios. We know that we make better decisions when we have the opportunity to hear the thoughts and perspectives of those who may be affected. We know that high school is an important time in any student's journey of life. So we're pleased to connect with you today about the future of our high schools. The purpose of this engagement and for this, for our time this evening is about trying to reflect both community voice and system need. I cannot stress enough to everyone present this evening that all our high schools will be filled and we will be full within the upcoming years. The purpose of our meeting is to share information with you about the two high school scenarios and to provide an opportunity for you to ask questions and share comments about the scenarios overall, as well as the four schools we're focusing on this evening. I'd like to emphasize that student learning and student success is at the heart of any decision that we make at the CBE. And while we know that these scenarios propose significant changes for some of our schools and some communities, our approach allocates resources where they'll have the most positive impact for all students. Both scenarios provide quality learning opportunities that allow students to meet the requirements to complete high school. With that said, we know that you will all have preferences for one scenario over another and this is your chance to express that. We encourage you to share your feedback this evening with us so we can consider it in our decision making. That's what this phase of the engagement process is all about. So now I'd like to pass it back to Karen to continue on with our meeting.
Thank you Darlene. So to give you a sense of what we plan to cover here this evening, this is what our agenda looks like. We've already covered the introductions and welcoming remarks. And next we'll explain how we're approaching questions and comments in this session. Then we'll touch on a few key aspects of this initiative overall before we delve into more of the details about the scenarios. In addition to talking about the scenarios overall, we'll also spend some time on each of the four schools in this group. We'll provide time for question and answers, add multiple points in the presentation, and then close our session by talking about next steps. We will open things up, we will open up the question and answer window shortly. This will show up on the right-hand side of your screen. And how this will work is that you can type your question in there. We won't be providing written responses during the meeting in, in that comment bar as we want to ensure we don't distract from the actual presentation. However, we have several subject matter experts here this evening to answer your questions verbally. We would just ask that you don't get too far ahead in typing in your questions. So for example, if you have a question about a specific school, then please wait until we've presented the information about the school before you type in your question. As there's a good chance the presentation may touch on what you want to ask about. We will pause at several points to take questions. The first opportunity to ask questions will be on the scenarios overall. And then we'll pause after speaking about each school to take some questions and respond to those specific concerns about schools, as well as having time following that for you to ask any questions that you may have. We will have someone moderating comments and questions and so we welcome all your comments and feedback. But it's important that those comments and questions be shared in a respectful way. So also keep in mind that we have, there was an opportunity for people to submit questions in advance of this session. So we have reviewed those and when it's appropriate, we will answer those questions during the Q and A times or we will cover it off in the presentation content. So that has been captured here and will be considered in the presentation. Just to remind everyone what this engagement is all about. We aim to balance enrollment at our schools in a way that maintains access flexibility and choice for students and considers available space and resources. I want to emphasize that in doing this, we need to consider what is best for student learning overall. Also in this timeline, we're still on track to implement any changes for the 2022-23 school year as indicated at the outset of this project. This shows the timeline for the project as, as it stands now. It gives you a snapshot of the overall timing and the points at which you can share your thoughts and perspectives, which are highlighted in blue. You can see that after this phase, there will be another opportunity for feedback before a decision is made. The exact timing of when the proposed plan is shared for feedback will depend on the work required to develop the proposed plan, which we won't have a full understanding of until we have reviewed all of the feedback on the scenarios. So this will take place in June or September with a final decision expected no later than December. There were a wide range of perspectives expressed in the input provided last fall, but there was also common ground. There were the common themes, these were the common themes that emerged. So first, maintaining current grade configurations. That was important to many. Then one of the strongest themes we heard was about the importance of offering a strong regular program and having consistency and quality across high schools. This was very important to our parents. There was also recognition from many people that proximity, travel time, and logistics can have a significant impact for students and families related to transportation. And so now I'm happy to hand things over to Teresa Martin and I'll just take a moment to share. Bear with me one moment while we change this over. Okay Teresa, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you Karen. Both scenarios provide quality learning opportunities that allow students to feel, to meet the requirements to complete high school. They do this in three key ways. Provide a more equitable learning experience for all high school students. Maintain a regular program at every high school. Allow for alternative programs and academic enrichment when criteria are met. It was important to have criteria that would guide decisions made about alternative programs and academic enrichment. Equity, sustainability, and the learning experience offered by programs were all important considerations. Both scenarios help to address the objective of this engagement by balancing out utilization across our high schools. If no changes were made, we could expect to have 30% of our high schools in the balanced utilization range. With both scenarios we are presenting to you, we are able to improve that significantly, to have 71% of schools in the balanced utilization range. When our schools are closer to the balanced range, students are able to have better learning experiences as we are able to avoid overcrowding and limitations and on scheduling classes. This is very important in providing the best opportunities possible for our students into the future. Looking at the scenarios. Both scenarios include some consideration of highs, some consolidation of high school programs. Scenario B provides a greater degree of consolidation than A. Regular program. The scenarios do not, do propose some communities being re-designated to different high schools than they are currently attending. However, four out of five students in the regular program will continue to be designated to the same high school in both scenarios. In scenario B, more students would be closer to home than in scenario A. Regarding IB, both scenarios propose reducing from five locations down to four locations. Three of the locations are the same in both scenarios with the fourth changing, with the fourth location changing. Lester B for one scenario and John G Deefenbaker in the other. French immersion. For French immersion, we are providing two possibilities. In scenario A, we are proposing that we continue to have four locations, but we make a change to location from Lester B Pearson to Robert Thirsk. In scenario B, we are proposing some consolidation to three locations in order to gain efficiencies. The thinking here is to maintain the program at current locations where student enrollment numbers are high enough for a robust program. Spanish bilingual. We are proposing, we consolidate from two locations down to one location in scenario A. Crescent Heights is a more central location for the program when consolidated to one site than either Dr. E.P. Scarlett or William Aberhart. This location also helps balance out enrollment law among high schools. In scenario B, we are proposing that the Spanish bilingual program is discontinued at high school. The students who attend, who have attended a Spanish bilingual program, CADA 9, and wish to receive Spanish language credentialing may do, do so through the IB language program components offered at Henry Wisewood, John G Deefenbaker, Sir Winston Churchill, and Western Canada. And/or they could make arrangements to complete the appropriate DELA examination through the DELA organization. Art-centered learning. In both scenarios, the program is eliminated at the high school level. French IB. This specialized program may not be sustainable into the future considering costs and student enrollment. We have provided one scenario where it continues and one where it doesn't. Phasing out programs. There were several questions on the idea board for this session about phasing out programs. This information should speak to those questions. We have customized this information to share the information about programs relevant to this group and I'll note that this is also detailed in the scenario overview document posted on our website. So when we say phasing out, we mean that students are able to complete the program at the same location where they started. In the two scenarios, we propose phasing out programs whenever we have resources to allow for it. This may not be possible in French immersion at Lester B Pearson. So in that situation, students would be re-designated to the new locations starting in September 2022. When it comes to the regular program and community redesignations, students attending a school in the 2021-22 school year will be able to complete high school at that same school. Phasing out will not be provided for siblings attending other schools. We have also provided clarification here regarding the PVA program and dual credit programs based on the questions submitted in advance of this session.
We'll pause now to address any questions we have at this point. I'll ask Deb to let us know what questions we have in the queue to answer now before we move on.
Thanks Teresa. So first, we have a question from the idea board around phasing out for students at Queen Elizabeth High School, which is a grade seven to 12 school. Lori Cooper, I invite you to have a response to that question.
Thanks Deb. Hi, hi everyone. I'm Lori Cooper. I'm the Education Director for Area 7 and also very proud Education Director for Queen Elizabeth High School and Ernest Manning High School. The question that was, that was asked had to do with a student starting grade seven or currently in grade seven at Queen Elizabeth. And as we know, it's a very unique situation with Queen Elizabeth High School, given that it's a seven to 12 school. And just wondering about the scenario proposal that's there for Queen Elizabeth regarding McEwen. And so the question had to do with, my kids are in grade seven currently at Queen Elizabeth and what is the possibilities in terms of the 2024 scenario A and B regarding a McEwen student going to John D. Deefenbaker? And so acknowledging that this is a unique situation due to the grade seven to 12 configurations at Queen Elizabeth High School. And just so you know that a student who is currently in grade seven, so this year is in grade seven at Queen Elizabeth, would be entering grade 11 at the time of the designation change in 2024. And so that student, these students from McEwen would then have the choice at that time to stay at Queen Elizabeth High School or attend Deefenbaker. Thanks.
Thanks Lori. Looking over in the Q and A, our first question is, is this presentation being recorded and will it be made available on the CBE website? I believe I can answer that question. That quest, the answer is yes. We are recording this session and we will make it available on the CBE website. The next question is around IB and the proposal to consolidate IB. There's a concern that we are cutting the number of IB spots significantly and some concern that we are going to be disappointing a lot of families. And so Darlene, I invite you to respond to this question.
Thanks so much Deb and thank you Karen for putting your questions forward in the chat. So when we look at our five current sites offering IB, the consolidation down to four sites does allow us to ensure that we have strong IB programs at each of those sites. Currently having it spread over the five sites, we do see some imbalances in terms of class size for IB and the impacts that that also can have on regular programming in a school. So when we're talking about offering choice to students, it will, I can understand why one would think by consolidating our sites, that would equate to limiting space. We are not limiting or at this time capping any of our enrollment for our IB programs. The second part of your question regarding French immersion IB, I would like to call upon Calvin Davies for response.
Good evening. Thank you very much Darlene. I think this flows into the second component. So there's a distinction that we need to talk a little bit about. French immersion IB means that the core courses in areas such as social studies are taken in French at the IB level. This sometimes can get confused with what's called French immersion, regular IB opportunities. So you can take French as a second language as an IB course, which is different than French immersion IB. So in one of the scenarios, we have proposed to continue with a French immersion IB. We are, we're monitoring numbers and as such, we have a scenario that continues with a French immersion IB and a scenario that does not include the French immersion IB. So certainly interested in feedback from parents with regard to that component of the scenarios. There's a question related to, you know, decreasing internationally recognized programming in French. And actually, we went through an act of engagement that led to expansion of French immersion in Northwest Calgary and hence the addition of Robert Thirsk in scenario A. Because we realized with that expansion, a number of students are living in that Northwest quadrant and that Robert Thirsk and that Robert Thirsk would be closer to home. The other thing that we're balancing with French immersion is we know that we need to have a substantial cohort of kids leads to increased quality of programming in terms of selection and breadth of courses available. So by consolidating, we feel that we would develop some strong cohorts of French immersion programs in those high schools identified in scenario B. So certainly not looking to decrease numbers in French immersion. We believe that we are having opportunities to respond to the increase in the north and northwest and looking forward to feedback around scenario A and B in relation to French immersion programming.
Thanks, Calvin. The next two questions are around Spanish bilingual. The first question is, how does removing a Spanish bilingual program fit with CBE values of diversity? And a concern that this individual's child may not have the academics to pursue Spanish in the IB program. Second question is related in wondering how removing Spanish bilingual how both scenarios are meant to continue to offer access, flexibility, and choice. And the sentiment that that may not apply to Spanish bilingual students. So Calvin, if you wouldn't mind responding to these questions on Spanish bilingual.
Thank you very much. And if I don't fulfill the answers completely, Deb, please remind me because there are several facets to the question. So I think that, you know, both scenarios offer opportunities for students that wish to pursue Spanish language acquisition. One of the things that we need to be aware of is there continues to be attrition at the high school level. And this is due to many factors around the multitude of choices that are available for high school students at the high school level. So in scenario A, again, the program would continue with Crescent Heights High School. And in scenario B, there would not be a Spanish bilingual high school. The, again, the early years of Spanish bilingual program saw year-over-year growth. And as the program expanded all the way to grade 12. But in recent years and over the course of the growth, there's been a smaller uptake towards the high school level. Approximately one-third of students who enter Spanish bilingual program in grade one will continue to grade 12. So there's a marked drop in the retention at the high school level. And if we took a look at the retention rate moving into grade 10, it's less than 75% across both high schools offering Spanish bilingual programming. So people are making some choices at the high school level. But we wanted to make sure that we left, had a scenario A that had a high school, Crescent High School, identified for continued high school programming to get feedback on that scenario. And the scenario B, which does not have a designated high school, where people would be making choices that could include, we didn't mention, Spanish IB, but also opportunities to look at where students fit in relation to the course sequence of Spanish 20 and 30 and having opportunities about around Spanish language and culture moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Calvin. The next question is around IB. If IB spots are being moved around, does that mean IB teachers will be moved to? Darlene?
Thanks for the question, Deb. And so when we look at consolidation of our alternative programs or some of our enhancement programs, for teachers to be able to teach in the IB program, there is credentialing that is involved with that, just as there is credentialing required for a school to be able to offer IB. So every spring, we principals do go through the process of reviewing requests that come in for both regular program and any alternative programs that they offer within their school and make staffing adjustments accordingly. So will there be movement regarding staff particular to IB? That is something that we definitely are considering and looking at with our human resources department.
Thank you, Darlene. The next individual, there's a series, I think of three comments around a concern with regards to Spanish IB. This individual spoke to the IB coordinators at Churchill and Western and learned that only Western has offers Spanish IB at the appropriate level for a student coming from the K-9 Spanish bilingual program, whereas Churchill has what is called initio. So this individual is seeking some clarification around that. I believe, Darlene, that that would be you.
Yes, thank you. And so there has been significant work that the CBE has undertaken over the last two years regarding the IB program in terms of consistency in program offering throughout the CBE. And so I know that our education director, Michelle Howell, has worked extensively regarding course offerings, course selection for that continuity. I know she is with us this evening. And so we are happy to take this back for additional review. But in putting the proposal together and having the conversation, the understanding was that Spanish IB would be available at all our IB locations.
Thank you, Darlene. The next question is, can the CBE provide the reasoning for pushing this project forward now while other large urban school boards have differed, similar, deferred, excuse me, similar projects for the time being to allow for the post-COVID new normal dynamics to resolve themselves? What makes Calgary different? Won't planning change now based on historical data increase rework costs in the future? For that one, Danny, would you like to take that one, please?
Certainly, Deb. Thank you. I'm Danny Brett, the superintendent of Facilities and Environmental Services. The circumstances that we're currently facing already today within our high schools already, I guess, are causing challenges. We have several high schools where we've had to make interim decisions because the schools are overutilized. There are simply too many students within the neighboring communities. We already also have schools that, because of the growth of the city over many years and how population and demographics have changed throughout the city, are now very underutilized. And so already today, we are in a situation where there is an imbalance within the system. And that is impacting the opportunities that are available in schools that are both twofold because then there's a lack of space in those schools to be able to provide that programming richness and variety. And in those schools that are underutilized because then there isn't that critical mass of students to be able to offer that richness of programming and variety. So we already know that we need to move now. And add to that the fact that, of course, through the knowledge of the students that are currently within CBE schools, there's also the recognition that by 2025, we are really going to hit a peak in terms of total number of high school students. So we have to have this in place before that time because it does take some time for the changes to actually make a difference at those schools. And that's why we're talking about phasing out in some cases and the ability of students that are in grade 10 at the start of September of 2021 being able to remain at their high school. Well, if we were to wait later, then the changes would have to be done much more dramatically. And we believe certainly wouldn't be in the best interests of students.
Thank you, Danny. There are a number of additional questions in our Q and A. In the interest of time, we do need to move on to do the rest of our presentation. If there's time at the end, we can revisit some of the questions that have remained unanswered. There is also the opportunity to share your questions on the idea boards that we have available through our website. And we will also be posting some content on the idea boards based on these questions.
So hi, my name is Connor McGreech. I'm planner with the Calgary Board of Education. And we'll start off by talking about utilization and why is it important? So utilization is one of the ways the province of Alberta measures how full a school is. Capacity and utilization rates contribute to planning decisions such as modular classroom allocations and capital projects approval. It is also used when calculating the operations and maintenance grants for school authorities for the operation, maintenance, and security of all the buildings. CBE uses it to also track how full a school is and use it when making accommodation decisions. Utilization is a calculation of the weighted enrollment divided by the provincial capacity. In the broadest sense, the calculation takes the square meters of the school and converts it to capacity. How many students can fit in the school? Regular classrooms, CTS spaces are taken into account in this calculation. The provincial capacity is provided to the CBE from the province and excludes any exemptions for leases. This is updated yearly and would reflect changes at the schools over the previous school year. Now, to get into a little bit more detail, there's a, you can see the, at the bottom of the screen, you have your equation on how we calculate it. But I'll walk you through it here. Weighted enrollment is kindergarten students, subtracting out the coded students. So those are severe codes, code 40 students, as we call them. And you then multiply that by 0.5. 0.5 being that kindergarten students are there for half day. And then you add in kindergarten students who are coded. Encoded students are counted at three times the utilization rate of a normal, regular, uncoded student. And they are multiplied by three. So in case of kindergarten, it would be 1.5. Then you add in all grade 1 to 12 uncoded students. And then in addition, you add in grade 1 to 12 coded students at three times the utilization rate to get your weighted enrollment. So this is why you might see, you might have utilization of 100% or higher. Yeah, you might have looked at their projection graph and it shows the stat column not quite reaching the capacity line. So that is why, because students who are coded count as using three times the space. So you can have utilization above 100%, but it doesn't come up to the line on your graph. Future utilization rates are estimated based on past proportion of coded students. This is even more pronounced in some of our schools tend to have a much higher proportion of complex learners than others. The difference between schools is generally tied to system classes that we would have a high proportion of code 40s. Some schools may have up to 10% of the population as code 40s, whereas other schools might only have 2% of its population as code 40s. So a little bit on how we do our projections. So planning projections are used, project use the items listed on the slide to inform our individual schools' projections. These factors are important. And as an example, when we have a new and developing community designated to a school, there may be a time that a new developing community may come to grow out of that school. And these factors allow us to determine when and how and by how many students. On the flip side, it also helps us track when a school may be facing declining enrollment and can be used to determine when and how large a community might be re-designated to such a school. We use a cohort survival ratio to age a population within a school and determine how many students will be there in future years. In the most simple terms, we look at how many students are in grade 10 in 2020 to determine how many students will be there in grade 11 in 2021, sorry. We then take into account the aforementioned factors to help us determine how much a population might grow or shrink year-over-year. So the first goal we'll look at, review tonight, is Central Memorial. The new regular program designations are continuation of the interim designations that are currently in place. So those are all the communities that came over from Ernest Manning. It will place, it will see these communities continue at Central Memorial School. So no change there for those communities. Ogden and Riverbend, these communities are close to Henry Wiswood School. And this designation will ensure that the regular program and the IB program are aligned into the future. So they'll be designated to the same school, Henry Wiswood. This is something that's not happening now. And South Calgary West, this is an opportunity to align the community so that they're designated to the same school. Currently, South Calgary is split between Central Memorial and Western Canada high schools. Looking at scenario B, the new regular program designations are continuation, again, of the interim designations currently in place. It will, it will see the, most of the communities continue at Central Memorial except for a couple, and that's Cougar Ridge, Coach Hill, and Patterson. So other than those three communities, the designation remains the same. For Altidore, Shaganapi, and Richmond, this is similar to scenario A in that we have an opportunity to align community designations as, so that they're all designated to the same school, which they are not currently. Ogden and Riverbend to Lord Beaverbrook. So by designated to Lord Beaverbrook, these communities are provided with a difference between the scenarios. So it's not the same between scenario A and scenario B for these schools. So they will still, while going to Lord Beaverbrook, they'll still be designated to a school quite close to home. So we'll now, to get to take questions on Central Memorial High School. And I'm going to pass off for the first idea board question over to Michelle.
Hi there. My name is Michelle Howell and I'm the acting director for Area Six and Alternative Programs. So one question that we received about Central was specific to the PVA program. And the question was around, are there going to be any changes to the PVA program moving forward? So in terms of that answer, what we wanted to share is that there's not going to be any changes to the PVA as a result of high school engagement. Now that said, future enrollment at Central Memorial High School will be determined based on how many spaces are available in the school for a PVA program. And that would not be a process that is any different from previous years. That would be a continuation of principals looking at space allocation that they have in their own buildings. One point that we did want to share tonight, though, was just to clarify the difference between PVA, which is the performing of visual arts in comparison to the art-centered learning program. So just making a distinction that Central is the only high school offering the PVA program. So that is our answer and our question from Central Memorial. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. So in looking through the questions on the side related to Central Memorial, there is a question around Coach Hill. Why were established communities that have always been zoned for school and within the 2.4 walk zone of Manning moved? And new communities seem to have taken their place at these schools. I realize this question could be relevant to Central Memorial or Ernest Manning, but we can perhaps address that question at this time. And Connor, I believe this would be a planning question.
Hi, I'm.
Or should I turn it over to Lori Cooper?
Sorry, if you can hear me, sorry, this is just a technical difficulty here, but I'm, so in response to the question around Central Memorial, Coach, sorry about that. Thanks for your patience. So we decided that when redesigning those students from Coach Hill to Central Memorial, we actually stuck with the communities that are closest to the new site, the Ernest Manning and School. So we did go with proximity to those, to that school for the communities that do remain. All the other, the other communities, Kalani, Glengarry, Patterson, Richmond West, those are all the communities further east, closer to the older site of Ernest Manning, when it used to be located by Westbrook Mall. So that was the rationale for moving Cougar Ridge.
Thanks, Connor. There is another question around Central. What is the projected increase in student numbers at Central?
I would refer you to the story map where you can see all the detailed projections for Central Memorial School, both in projection A and B and the status poll projection.
Thank you, Connor. And another question, the three communities that will not be designated for Central Memorial in scenario B, will they go to Ernest Manning? What were these communities? I believe that would be Cougar Ridge, Patterson and Coach Hill. Connor, I will let you take that one as well. Connor, you're on mute.
Sorry, folks. The Deb has it correct and you'll see it coming up on the Ernest Manning slide. It is Cougar Ridge, Coach Hill and Patterson.
And where will those, where will those be going?
Oh, they will be going to Bonnais in that scenario. They would be attending that school.
Michelle, are you on mute?
Sorry about that. I'm just having some technical difficulties here. Can we just repeat that last question? Sorry?
Yes, would Central Memorial offer full French high school program?
Central Memorial offering full French? They have French as a second language. As far as the options are concerned, yep, they go to the 30 level.
But not a French immersion program?
Correct, not a French immersion program.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah, thank you.
Another question, have you given any thought to providing transportation to Central Memorial from communities that aren't well-served by Calgary Transit, such as Westgate? Danny Breton?
Yes, hello. So transit was certainly a consideration, as you saw at the outset of this presentation. That was one of the areas that we heard from from parents. So long as we are respecting our guidelines, the expectation was is that students continue to utilize Calgary Transit. And to my knowledge, I got to just verify a chart here. But I believe that that is met in regards to Westgate.
Thank you, Danny. So there is a question here around voting that I think we we need to address before moving on. How will the voting be tabulated and will it be broken down based on neighborhood for that participant slash voter belongs to? For example, if Riverbend participants vote for scenario A, but the rest of the neighborhoods vote for scenario B, what will that skew the results? Karen, would you like to take that as an engagement question?
Yes, thanks, Deb, sorry. So I think it's just important for us all to remember that in engagement processes like this, it is, it doesn't come down to a vote per se. So we consider the feedback that we gathered from stakeholders. But we also are guided by other factors in the decision-making process. So a variety of things are considered in terms of the decision-making. The stakeholder feedback is considered in in its entirety, in terms of all of the perspectives that we hear from from parents, from students and from staff. But it isn't just a case of a vote and majority wins in all cases. So there's a lot of complexity that goes into this. So we have to consider a variety of factors in the decision-making process.
Thanks, Karen. Do we have time for one more central question?
One more and then let's move on.
Okay, there is a 10% overall exam score drop between Manning and Central slash Bonnais. Just disappointing when people based house purchases on school rankings. I'm not sure, Darlene, would you like to take that? Or Michelle Howell?
No, I'm happy to take that question, Deb. And so we know that school rankings are attributed to a number of different factors. In looking at the ever-changing communities and growth within our city, we are both excited to see what the impacts will be by having different communities re-designated into schools that will offer them both that accessibility, flexibility and choice, but also within an environment that does not attribute to overcrowding or underutilization.
Thank you, Darlene. And with that, we will continue on the presentation.
Thanks, Deb. Karen, could you roll this slide forward to Ernest Manning, please? Thank you. So Ernest Manning, Ernest Manning is one of our most full high schools. The interim designation was needed as a step which addresses the immediate and pressing space issues at Ernest Manning High School. Scenario A maintains the interim designation in its entirety. Scenario B affects the same communities with one adjustment that sees Cougar Ridge, Coach Hill and Patterson re-designated to Bonnais High School. So that was based on feedback we had heard during the 2019, the feedback we got during that part of the engagement. So because the situation for Ernest Manning is quite straightforward and who's being re-designated or remaining re-designated, we'll move straight on to the questions.
Great, thanks, Connor. So there is, it's a comment. And perhaps that we can use this comment for a little bit more explanation. You also moved Discovery Ridge to Central, yet West Springs, which is further away, remains at Ernest Manning. So Connor, I'm not sure if you could provide some additional rationale in that regard.
Hi, Deb, thanks. I'm just trying to, could you repeat the question? I'm trying to find it on our published list, but I couldn't come across it. So if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, it's in, it's in our Q and A, our live Q and A today. You also moved Discovery Ridge to Central, yet West, West Springs, which is further away, remains at Ernest Manning.
Yes, so the decision on Discovery Ridge to Central Memorial, that decision was based largely around the previous relationship Discovery Ridge had with Central Memorial High School. So prior to the new site at Ernest Manning opening, Discovery Ridge had been designated to Central Memorial. So at the time, the decision revolved around that aspect that they, the community already had a relationship with that school.
Thank you, Connor. And I am not seeing any additional questions regarding Ernest Manning. There is a question about school zone or walk zone. Are there any differences at all in school zone or walk zone in scenario A or B compared to the current situation? So have we changed the walk zones for schools?
I'll take that one as well, Deb. The walk zones are not changing for most schools. We may revisit some walk zones. But I don't think any of the schools in this meeting will be, will be, will be looked at or changed.
Thanks, Connor. So we can move to the next school.
All right, Queen Elizabeth High School. So this is again similar to Ernest Manning. There's not a lot of variety in the options between Queen Elizabeth scenario A and B. With the opening of the New North High School, there will be room at John Difan Baker High School to accommodate McEwan Glen in Sandstone Valley. Now, this aligns these communities that currently go to Sir John and McDonald for grade seven to nine and currently go to Queen Elizabeth, but will continue on at John G. Difan Baker after the new school opens in 2024. So this is a decision that isn't happening or being implemented for a couple more years than the other decisions. This also includes a small section of Country Hills, south of Beddington Creek. So Country Hills is split in two by Benton Creek and this, the portion most proximal to McEwan Sandstone has been designated with those communities to Queen Elizabeth. But into the future, they will be attending the New North High School. So we did have, and I, we did have an idea board question come in with this. And so I will, I think this.
Question already?
Yeah, this one's been addressed so by Lori. So again, they will be able to finish, they can finish 11 and grade 12 there.
So there do not seem to be any questions about Queen Elizabeth High School at the moment. There are a couple of questions around the fact that Ernest Manning is still very full and why further changes weren't made to remedy that. And so I wonder if it would be okay to back up a little bit and and perhaps address that question because it's been asked a couple of times. And so this would be around designating communities. So Connor, I will pass that.
Yeah, I'm, I was just turning on my camera there. So we did re-designate a number of communities to address this growing enrollment at Ernest Manning High School. And while it does continue over the utilization rate, if you look at the projections shared on the story map, you can see that they do, after a few years, do reduce as those communities kind of finish their growth cycle and we see fewer students coming up. So the students coming into the school in 2026 and 2027, a lot of those students are already in our system. So we know how many students are coming up in past years. So we've taken the approach that because it's going to be a short-term overcapacity issue and it will come back down in future years, that that would be acceptable.
Thanks, Connor. There are a few questions about the Calgary Catholic School Board. And if the Calgary Catholic Board builds a West High School, would designations open up again for Ernest Manning?
So I see a couple of those comments now and we, so a lot of our high schools see an uptick in grade 10. So students who may have been in alternative programs or not going to the regular program junior high school will apply to come to our high schools in grade 10. And we see that at Ernest Manning as well. If a West Catholic, Calgary Catholic school is open, that would likely have an effect on Ernest Manning. And at that time, I would say, we would see when and if an approval happens, what could be, how will affect enrollment at Ernest Manning High School? And we would address any changes at that time if the school ever did get approved.
Thanks, Connor. And just scrolling back up a little bit, there are a couple of questions related to transportation with regards to communities designated, re-designated to Central and also re-designated to Bonnais. Danny?
All right, you'll have to give me a few moments just to find those questions, Deb, unfortunately. But what I can say in the interim is I did verify the Westgate to Central Memorial. And what I see here is that Calgary Transit does service that routing within our guidelines.
So the question, will there be a school service bus to take students from Cougar Ridge, Coach Hill, Patterson to Bonnais? Or additional transit options?
So that is a really excellent question. This is an area where depending on the feedback we get, we may need to work even more closely with Calgary Transit. We already work very closely with them and have monthly meetings to ensure that their routes and and our bell times and everything else is aligned. Currently, the routes for Calgary Transit from those communities you just mentioned to Bonnais are less than adequate. They do not meet our guidelines. And so depending on where we end up going in terms of ultimately selecting a scenario, we would of course, first of all, work with Calgary Transit to this, to see if they could better service those communities and their access to Bonnais. And we would certainly contemplate other interim measures as well until such time as Calgary Transit could establish something. And so what I'm talking about here is, you know, in sort of the worst case, because of course that is the the option that costs us the most, would be the establishment of yellow busing from those communities to Bonnais High School.
Thanks, Danny. There is a question related to DHH and Gate at Queen Elizabeth High School. Regarding complex classes, what does that mean on the slide that says they are evaluated every year? Does this mean DHH and Gate classes can change from Queen Elizabeth from year to year? And Lori Cooper, I'll pass that question to you.
Hi there. I I'm not sure which slide we're referencing in relation to the question. But I can say that complex classes like our DHH classes, a Queen E, deaf and hard to hearing transitions class or the mental health class that exists at the school are not part of this engagement process.
And could you provide hopefully a brief description of what that? of what that assessment process is from a year-to-year basis on complex classes? Or shall I pass that to someone else?
I'm not as familiar with how they're evaluated year-to-year. I, I'm, yeah, maybe someone can else take that one on.
Hi Lori and Deb, I'm happy to take that on. Just as we share with our principals their resource allocation each spring, which is their budgets for the upcoming school year, we also do a complete review every year of any of our students that are requiring or looking to seek placement in our complex needs classes. And we do have through our inclusive education department, a extensive screening process by which applications are made by our strategists and subject matter experts regarding placements for those classes. We have to examine where our students live in terms of proximity to the sites that they're being offered out of. And so as Lori mentioned, right, for some of our individual classes that serve our complex needs students, they're reviewed annually to see if that's still the best location. There is still ample space for that program within the school and how the program is working within the building. So I hope that helps clarify a little bit. For programs such as the DHH, which we know the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program has been longstanding at Queen Elizabeth, as been the Gate Program at Queen Elizabeth, we are not looking to move either of those programs out of Queen Elizabeth High School as part of this engagement.
Thanks Darlene. There is another question about Queen Elizabeth High School. My child is registered at Queen Elizabeth as an out-of-bound student. Will out-of-bound students be asked to leave with new designations of high schools? Would that, Connor, could you respond to that question around designation and out-of-boundry?
I can, similar to Danny though, I like to, it's hard to, for me to get the gist of it over when it's related to me by voice. So I'm trying to find it on the published questions here, so.
I can maybe start Connor if it helps.
Yes please Lori.
This question was asked earlier on. My only hesitation in answering it and just to share that is that at Queen Elizabeth High School, quite a large percentage of the population are out-of-bound students because of the specialized programs that exist at the school, either with Gate or Deaf or Hard of Hearing Transitions with a class. So I'm just, as you're looking, I'm just a little hesitant to, to say yea or nay to an out-of-bound student piece there because many students are out-of-bound because of the programs that they're in. What I can say too is part of the, our administrative regulations in terms of student transfers and pieces like that, you know, once, once an out-of-designated attendance area registration is accepted for a student in the CBE, there, a student is enrolled for the duration of the current school year or the course of the program in a high school for a high school student, provided that they remain in that course and complete that course.
Okay, Connor, did you have anything to add?
No, sorry, Lori covered that excellently.
Okay, excellent. So looking at the time, we shall move on with the remainder of the presentation.
So the final school we're going to cover this evening is Western Canada. Western Canada serves a number of smaller downtown communities, of which there are a number of changes in scenario A. And this allows the continued offering of IB and French IB, as well as accommodates all the students from the Northeast for French immersion. South Calgary. So we addressed this already when speaking to the Central Memorial slide. It's a small number of students, but aligns the designation for the community. The Bel Air, Manchester, Mayfair, Meadow Park, Ogden and Windsor Park communities. So these are communities that are actually very close to Henry Wisewood. And many of these students from these communities are within walking distance to Henry Wisewood School. So scenario A proposes a re-designation for both the regular and IB program for these students to Henry Wisewood. For Riverbend, we are looking at an IB and regular program alignment at Henry Wisewood School. For Chinatown and Eau Claire. So this goes back to balancing enrollment between schools and these students would be designated to Crescent Heights High School, which is quite close to these communities and within walking distance. Inglewood and Ramsey, part of, this is also part of rebalancing. And they will have access to Forest Lawn through the new Max Purple route that's now in service. And scenario B, scenario B is different because we have only half of the Lester B Pearson French Immersion students are designated to Western Canada. French IB is discontinued, so there's less space for IB, and there's less space for IB into the future. And this means more regular program students designated into the future in this scenario. So Bel Air, Manchester, Mayfair, Meadow Park and Windsor Park, there's no change in this, in scenario B from scenario A. Ogden and Riverbend IB, again, no change. But we do see a change with the Altar Shaggenapi in Richmond. So again, this is realignment. Ogden, so Lord Beaver Brook provides a different option for this community. And as mentioned about previously, the French immersion from Lester B Pearson is slightly different re-designation than in scenario A with the southern half of the Northeast being designated to Western Canada High School. Now we had some idea board questions come in in respect to Western Canada High School. So I will address these questions now. So we had a questions come in and some of them were addressing, so I'll read it out, under scenario A, the communities of Inglewood and Ramsey are moved to Forest Lawn High School. This move creates 85 to 100% capacity at Western Canada High School, while creating a projection for Forest Lawn up to 110%. Now, so the long-term for Forest Lawn High School has increasing enrollment. And while the projected utilization seven years may reach over 100%, the school does have the benefit of being located in close proximity to Jack James School. And there may be future opportunities to utilize existing space between both facilities. So that is something that is currently going on and we could look to continue into the future. As well, there's an upstairs portion of the school, which is currently unused. So this is a space above the area office. It occupies a whole wing of the school, the area office on the main floor, and the second floor is currently unused. So there's recent, there's recent developments with the province and regarding the cancellation of federally funded program, sorry federally funded program that will allow school capacity to be increased slightly. That's using this space above the area office. So we have the opportunity to increase the capacity of Forest Lawn High School. So while it's not reflected in the projection, this is something we'd love to move on into the, into the future. Some other themes from this, the comments were, we're not meeting the planning principles for keeping cohorts together. So this relates to Inglewood and Ramsey students after grade nine entering grade 10. They are currently attending Rito Park, but they, in the scenario B, they would be, or scenario A, sorry, they would be designated to Forest Lawn. And this would split the cohort after grade nine from Rito Park. So keep in mind, back to the beginning of the presentation, scenario A and B were developed using different approaches. So scenario A provides the opportunity to maintain the IB as well as the French IB at Western Canada High School. So this is a, this maintains a choice in education that would not be available in scenario B. And it's also important to remember that not all planning principles can be met at all times. These principles, they're not a checklist and they are not mutually exclusive. These principles are used to guide our work. Now, there was also some comments around designating students further from home. On this instance, actually, Inglewood and Ramsey both were, it's much quicker to get to Forest Lawn than Western Canada High School. Inglewood will have a commute of only 19 minutes on a single bus to Forest Lawn, and that's the Max Purple. Where currently, it's a 38-minute commute with two transfers. And Ramsey's propose, the proposal of Ramsey would see them going to Forest Lawn, it's 23-minute ride on one, a single bus. Well, right now it's 30 minutes to Western Canada on two buses. So there is an improvement in accessibility for these communities to that program. Another comment we had in the idea board was specialized programming taking precedence over regular programming. So the continuation of specialized IB French at Western displaces students from, students from Inglewood and Ramsey for regular programming at Western. So again, it relates back to the difference in that scenario A offers that greater, scenario B offers a greater degree of consolidation to scenario A. So to maintain the French, the IB and the French IB Western Canada, we had to look at rebalancing some of these communities. So that includes Chinatown, Eau Claire, those other partial communities to the south of Western Canada and Inglewood and Ramsey as well. So while the IB programs remain in scenario A, they're also going to see changes. And this is the changes in reduced space to these programs long-term. As the regular program, the communities that remain designated will continue to grow as well as French will continue to grow. So this is actually how Western Canada High School maintains a balanced enrollment under 100%. It's through the decreased accessibility to the IB program as the school is able to limit enrollment in that program. Whereas if it's a community that's designated for regular program, we can't limit enrollment that comes out of a community. So in scenario A, those, it's the IB program and the French IB program that will feel in front of any pressure increases at the school, pushing the school over the limit.
Thanks Connor. So turning to the Q and A, there is a question about student currently in French IB due to graduate in 22, 23 school year. Will they be allowed to complete their grade 12 at Western Canada with either option? Connor, I believe this is a phase-out question. And just seeking confirmation that the phase-out, given available resources and enrollment of 25 students per grade, would apply to French IB.
So if a student is in the school at the time of the designation change at Western Canada School, High School, they will be able to remain and finish until the end of grade 12.
Thanks Connor. The next question is, is there consideration for how the majority of families that live in Inglewood and Ramsey work and have activities to the west of the community, brackets downtown, move to Forest Lawn from Western would be detrimental to the majority of families, community involvement, et cetera, versus special interest programming? Connor, I will let you-
I would say that, should I just be, no. We looked primarily at balancing the enrollment between Western Canada and Forest Lawn and the surrounding schools. But I guess I would also point out that this is why there's, you know, scenario A and then scenario B. So we were bound, we're trying to, to find a, you know, a balance between choice and balancing enrollment between the schools as well.
Thanks Connor. There's a question, where does East Village go under scenario A? Connor?
East Village, I refer you again to the story map, a great resource. It has all those maps for the various schools. You can see, you can zoom in specifically to the school. So, but the short answer to the question is that East Village will remain designated to Western.
Okay, thank you. And another question, which high school will continue to, continue the French immersion IB program?
Since I got my camera on, I'll just take this one as well. So in scenario B, the program will be discontinued, but in scenario A, it will remain at Western Canada High School.
And another question about French IB. What is the projection for French IB enrollment? You have indicated there are concerns with sustainability. Connor, is that a question that can be answered by reviewing the materials with regards to projections?
I would like to defer to one of my colleagues on that one. Possibly Darlene, if that's all right with you.
All right, Darlene.
And so happy to turn on my camera. So there are many factors that influence whether students will continue in the French immersion IB program. So what we do is we look at current number of students enrolled. There have been some changes made in, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, regarding the alignment of courses being offered, but also regarding the use of partial IB and the number of courses required for a student to be enrolled in to be considered for partial or IB in the regular program or in the French immersion IB program. And so it is looking at the statistics over time in consultation with planning and seeing where, where the numbers are, are either escalating or, or dropping. So when we talk about sustainability, again, it's having that critical mass to be able to have a teacher dedicated to provide that strong programming for students. So we're happy to look into that further and get you that information.
Thanks Darlene. And a question around the, what is the criteria for capping the number of students enrolled to the IB program at Western Canada? Darlene?
When we have schools that offer more than one program, we go about the process of determining number of students per program. So it's not simply an overall number. It has to be broken down into how many students per grade, per class, and what it, what courses are they, they taking. And so again, this work is done in consultation, first with planning providing projections and numbers to the school principal. The school principal meeting with their education director and discussing how they're going to allocate resources over multiple programs. When we reach a point where we consider that we have to cap enrollment, it's looking at those long-term projections for our programs, as Connor mentioned earlier, looking at attrition rates or any anomalies that have happened over the years that would attribute to increased enrollment. In the past, perhaps, things that have attributed to that could be students transferring in from other areas where they might be able to participate in an IB program at another school. With French immersion IB, if we were to have only one school, that work would be done with the principal, the education director in consultation with planning.
Thank you Darlene. There is a question here about why is the CBE moving French immersion from Pearson to Western, displacing community children in the regular program at Western when there is more space at Aberhart and it is closer? So for that one. Calvin, can I pass that one to you with regards to the French immersion?
Certainly, pleased to talk about programming and the-
and leave the number crunching to, uh, planning. Um, so looking at the Lester B Pearson, uh, IB, uh, program, um, again, it is, uh, not, uh, increased in numbers over time. Uh, so that is one of the reasons that we are providing a scenario that looks at IB being moved from Lester B Pearson. Um, in that scenario, um, you'll note that, uh, the students north of Sixteenth Avenue in one of the scenarios would be designated to, uh, Western Canada High School. And, uh, we feel that, uh, based on the, the numbers, uh, that the designated regular program students, uh, to the Western Canada High School. So that's based on their regular program catchment area, um, would be accommodated at Western Canada High School. So I would look to Connor to, uh, to verify that, uh, but not looking at displacing regular program Western Canada students, uh, based on the potential, uh, move of, uh, Lester B Pearson students to Western Canada High in the IB program.
So a question around why, uh, why are we designating French immersion from northeast to Western Canada entirety in scenario A? Um, well, again, two different scenarios, two different approaches. Uh, we're in scenario A, there's, it quite, I guess, double back of it, there's two different approaches. And then from the northeast, there is pretty good access down through the train towards Western, uh, Canada High School. So that was one of our drivers in, in the first scenario is it's good accessibility for those students in the, in the, in the northeast and some of them currently access, uh, French IB programming at Western Canada High School. So we look to maintain that relationship there. And then in scenario B, different approach where we looked at having kids, uh, depending on geography, split between Aberhart and, uh, Western Canada.
Um, thanks Connor. Uh, there are a number of other comments, uh, around the, um, Inglewood and, uh, Ramsey, um, potential redesignation to, uh, Forest Lawn. Um, my, many of these are, are comments. Uh, there is a question about the scenarios. Um, there is a question whether we will develop a scenario C. Uh, is it a possibility that neither scenario A or B are put into place and a C is created? Um, Darlene, would you like to speak to that or would that Karen, would that be you?
I'm happy to, uh, to answer that question Deb. And so when we begin an engagement and we, uh, share information with our public, our efforts are to be transparent with the information that we are sharing with you. Uh, we have undertaken many engagements and I'm sure many of you have participated in previous engagements with the CBE. So the desire would not be to come out with anything, um, in, in terms of the option that hasn't been shared with you previously. And so are we saying that it can only be scenario A exactly as it is outlined? Or scenario B, uh, we may do tweaking to one or the other, uh, that would encompass, um, the feedback that we've heard from the sessions like we are hearing here this evening. We would not be coming forward and I need to be clear that we would not be proposing anything, uh, new or anything that we haven't shared with you uh, when we would come back, um, after we've analyzed and reviewed all this information.
Thank you Darlene. And, um, we have time for one more question before we are moving on. Um, and so there are a couple of, the same, similar vein about aligning, uh, middle school, junior high school, uh, cohorts with, uh, the changes proposed in the scenario, um, specific to, uh, the junior highs and middle schools that feed into Western Canada. Is there any thought, any thinking around, uh, realigning, uh, those cohorts as well? Um, or that one?
So Deb, that one would be mine, right? Um, so when we look at high school designation, so every, every address, every home has a designated high school. When we look at our alternative programs, uh, such as the TLC or science schools, uh, that do end at the grade nine level, students are then designated to their high school based on their home address. Um, and so your home address is, provides a regular high school and also provides you with the alternative, uh, programs, high school accessibility. So no, uh, looking at keeping cohorts based on alternative programs, uh, up to grade nine is not a factor for consideration at looking at designation for high school.
Thank you Darlene. And, uh, just one, there is one quick question here. What is the percent of students in IB versus regular programming overall? Um, I encourage you to look at the story map, um, that we've provided. Um, ninety, ninety out of every one hundred students is in the regular program, uh, at the high school level in the CBE. And you'll find other information about how many are in IB and other programs as well. And with that, um, I will turn it back over to, um, guess me, sorry, um, other questions or comments? So, um, I, there, uh, we have some time left for some additional questions and comments. And, uh, one comment came in on the idea board. Has the CBE studied the impact of scenario B on students' ability to retain Spanish language long term? Bilingual program is meant to be twelve years of instruction. Kids will now start to lose language in grade ten. Uh, Calvin, I will pass that to you.
Thanks Deb. Uh, this certainly is, uh, related to a question I responded to, uh, near the beginning of our session. Um, but the CBE has not conducted, uh, the impact of long-term language retention uh, of either of our language programs. Um, so, uh, you know, I just kind of reiterate, uh, we're talking about both scenarios, uh, offer opportunities for students. Um, scenario A with a, uh, centralized Spanish bilingual high school. Scenario B, uh, with opportunities to look at, uh, IB language in Spanish. Um, and also opportunities to look at, uh, Spanish, uh, and culture. Courses where appropriate, dependent on the level of, uh, Spanish of the student, uh, in their designated high school. And, uh, I did speak a little bit about retention rates and the reason why we are looking at consolidation, uh, as an option, uh, for Spanish bilingual in scenario A.
Thank you Calvin. Um, there is a question, I'm just scrolling back, uh, back through, a question about, um, in both scenarios A and B for IB, would all IB schools offer the same IB courses, full IB, partial IB, et cetera? Darlene?
Thanks Deb. So, uh, all schools that have an IB designation offer full IB and partial IB courses. As mentioned earlier, uh, extensive work has taken place over the last two years and is continuing, uh, with, under the direction of Director Michelle Howell, uh, to align the course offerings. So there is greater consistency in program choice for IB across our system.
Thanks Darlene. And I think the next question is for Connor. How has the two thousand eight significant increase in birth rate in Calgary been taken into account in the modeling of high school needs?
So we, um, we've been aware of the birth rate. So we track the birth rate through the city of Calgary census. So this is something that the city provides to us. Uh, and it tracks the number of students born or number of children born in every given, any given year. And then we can use that to inform our projections from elementary level all the way through to the high school level. So we, we, we can use that to determine how many students are going to intake into our system. And then as they carry forward, how many continue on, and that's the cohort survival ratio. And as well, how many enter our system into grade ten? So how many students do we, do we, do we pick up, uh, after grade nine? Cause many private charters, alternative, CBE, alternative programs, those, all those kind of programs, many of them end at the end of grade nine and the CBE picks up those students into, into grade ten. So, um, those would be reflected in the projections you see. And that is actually, you know, it ties back nicely to the whole reason we're here in the first place. Many of these students are now coming into that age group and leading to this, um, you know, abundance of students and pressure on our schools.
Thank you Connor. Um, the next question is, what is the rationale for eliminating art-centered learning entirely? Um, Keith, can I pass that to you?
Oh, yes. Hi everybody. Uh, the rationale for the arts of the learning being eliminated totally is just that there's going forward, there's a reduction in students enrolling in the program. And what we found is that we are able to, with the new high school success model that we've been working with, with the government of Alberta in education, we, we're looking at a model where students can still get the same quality of diversified learning with the arts-centered program in regular instruction. So arts-centered learning is learning through the arts, you learn the core program through the arts. So we're finding that we can still teach that same method in our regular programming and still have the arts infused in the core programming.
Thanks Keith. Uh, there's a question of, for clarification, I believe. Uh, when is the changing year for IB schools reducing from five schools to four schools? Is it two thousand twenty-two or two thousand twenty-four? Um, Connor, I believe the answer is two thousand twenty-two, if you wouldn't mind just confirming that?
Yeah, that's correct. Uh, yeah, that, so all the changes, many of these changes are being implemented for that year. So, um, the only ones not being implemented for two thousand twenty-two are anything related to the North High School.
Great. Thanks for that clarification and confirmation.
Deb, could I just add, uh, a component here?
Absolutely.
Just to clarify again, yeah, so for, um, so the decision that will be made, and that decision will be made by the end of this calendar year, so by fall of two thousand twenty-one, uh, will be implemented in September of two thousand twenty-two. And then the phase out for that, uh, for those students who are already in those schools in September of twenty-one, will be able to phase out in those programs where they're at or in those schools where they're at, with the exception of the, uh, French immersion program at Lester B Pearson where, uh, because of the numbers, uh, and, and the resources requirement, um, there is no phase out.
Thank you Daddy. Uh, right, um, there was a question from someone who lives in West, or in Hillhurst, I believe. Uh, I am just trying to search for it. The question is around, uh, the redesignation of IB students. Um, from, sorry, I am having a hard time finding it. Uh, redesignating Hillhurst to Lester B Pearson when, uh, Churchill and Western are closer schools. Um, and just a concern about the distance. Um, Connor?
Yeah, hello, I'm just, uh, pulling it up now. So, um, so the Hillhurst and, uh, section is essentially, we're trying to kind of, uh, improve the number of students at the Lester B Pearson program. So, um, in taking the, the number of students who were currently at John D. Deefenbaker, which are quite a large geographic area, it would be splitting those students in between the two remaining programs in the north. So that's Churchill and Pearson. And so the number of students who are in the redesignated portion to Lester B Pearson, so that encompasses everyone from McEwen and Sandstone all the way down, uh, to Hillhurst and Sunnyside. So there's a, not, um, compared to the northern part, there's not a lot of students in that area. And with reasonable accessibility through Max Orange right to the door, basically of Lester B Pearson High School, um, we looked at redesignating those students, uh, long-term, it's about a hundred, just over a hundred students towards Lester B Pearson.
Thanks Connor. Um, bear with me, I'm just, uh, scrolling through some that we've gone through already. Uh, so there's a question about, um, the utilization rates, um, for Ernest Manning. I did not understand how scenario A and B were different for Ernest Manning, but the utilization rates were different. I'm wondering if that's meant to be the same. Um, what contributes to this difference in utilization rates? Connor, I think, um, that might be referring, yeah, I keep referring to the out-of-boundary students perhaps? I know you and I had that conversation.
Um, well, first I would ask the person who posed the question, what, where are you seeing them different, I suppose? If you could, if you wouldn't mind putting that into the Q and As, then I might be able to better address your question. But the, the number of students in Ernest Manning remains the same in the both scenarios. So the only place I see them being different right now, um, there's a summary sheet that, that highlights the, the status quo if we do nothing and they would be at a much higher rate there. But otherwise through A and B, there should be no difference.
Um, thanks Connor. Um, so there is, um, a question about the redesignation of Richmond East to Central Memorial in scenario B. Um, this family is closer to Western Canada High School in trend, both transit and walking distance. Um, there is no direct bus to Central Memorial from Richmond East. Um, so, uh, another community redesignation question for you Connor.
So once again, it's around, um, alignment of communities that are currently split. So Richmond is another one of those communities that's currently split. So, um, go back to, uh, two different options for, for these communities and, um, one of them being, remaining with that community group through to the high school level.
Thanks Connor. Um, there's a statement, um, that possibly we can help clarify. Uh, in both scenario A and B, the schools that are projected to be overutilized are mainly around the perimeter of the city. That doesn't seem to make sense when you will continue to have new communities being built and likely to have additional students needing to attend. Uh, so, um, Connor, I think that gets to the complexity of your work. Um, if you wouldn't mind. If you wouldn't mind just addressing that comment.
Yeah, I will, I'll do my best here for you. So the, the, oh, the, the question's right, like the, the most full schools right now are closer to the newer suburbs. So we are, have, we have the New North High, which is being built. We have, you know, Ernest Manning, the new Ernest Manning, which is quite full, serving the whole west. We have Nelson Mandela in the northeast, which is quite full, serving the northeast. So what we do in planning is, we have, let's take for example Nelson Mandela. So that school is very full. And it is serving the students in the communities immediately around that school. So the community that's within and those neighboring communities. So when a new suburb, where many new students and families live and grow quite fast, open past Nelson Mandela, we have to then move students closer into the core of the city. So in that instance, we're, we're moving students, you know, sometimes one or two schools past where they live to a school that has space. And we do this across all grade levels in all schools. This happens at elementary, this can happen at junior high, and it's happening at high school now. And part of this high school engagement is to try and balance for these new communities, best way we can long-term, that, that keeps all our schools in the city as balanced as possible in their utilization, to make the best use of all our high school buildings and facilities.
Thanks, Connor. And I just received a note that Calvin is, will be clarifying some comments around IB.
Thank you. I think there's a question around IB and the displacement of other students because of the IB program. So I just wanted to clarify that all students that are designated to an IB school for the regular program have a spot at their designated school for the regular program. So it isn't a matter of IB students then at that school displacing students from the regular program.
Thank you for that clarification, Calvin. So there's a question here. Is Scenario A the preferred scenario for the CBE over Scenario B? Darlene, I'm going to pass that one to you.
So the goal that we had from the last time we went out in the fall to receive feedback from you was to ensure that we heard and paid attention to what parents were saying, as well as understood the restrictions around our, all of our resources, not just financial resources, but in this case, space resources. So there is not a preference for A or B with the CBE. Again, these are two scenarios that people worked extensively on to balance enrollment across all of our high schools. We are, this is our first evening of virtual engagement, so we need to receive feedback on what we're proposing to you, take that into account, and then come back out to you. So the short answer is, there is no preference. And my long answer was to give you a sense of how we landed, where we have landed this evening.
Thank you, Darlene. I am just going through the questions. There is a question here about, will the questions and answers to them from this session be posted somewhere for the public? Thank you.
Hi, Deb, this is Connor. I'd just jump in if I could.
Oh, sure.
So there was a follow-up to the earlier question around the Ernest Manning utilization. So the, the person who posed the question just gave some clarification. So in essence, like, why is there a slight difference between Scenario A and B in the projection? So the reason there's a slight difference in Scenario A and B is actually as a result of the Spanish bilingual program. So the assumption there for Scenario B is that if the Spanish bilingual program is no longer offered, those students would have to return to their designated schools.
Thanks, Connor. There is another question here. In Scenario A, why isn't Inglewood and Ramsey moving to Crescent Heights from Western if it has to move? Crescent Heights is not over capacity. Forest Lawn is over capacity. Please explain, you are answering similar questions for other schools. So Connor?
So I'll just, quick response to that comment is really just accessibility. It came down to that proximity to, to Forest Lawn. So that was our thinking behind our decision.
All right. There's a question about partial IB. Is taking one Spanish IB course sufficient to be considered partial IB? In Scenario B, there are all Spanish bilingual kids guaranteed entry into IB Spanish? Darlene, I think that's you.
Actually, it's Michelle Howell, but thank you, Deb.
Okay, Michelle.
Thank you for that. Just to clarify, we had a process this year that we reviewed what partial IB meant. And there has been a shift in terms of that commitment to partial IB moving forward. So to answer the question, one Spanish IB course is not sufficient to be considered partial IB. To be considered partial IB, there are a few components. There's a course that's called Theory of Knowledge, TOK for short. There's also a program called CAS. And as well, we are asking, in addition to those two programs, two additional IB courses. So Spanish certainly could be one of those, but you would also need to take another one as well. And the commitment to that partial IB program would be for the minimum of two years at that school as well. So there's quite a commitment to it. But as far as kind of the second layer to that question, in terms of IB Spanish, I want to make sure I got that correct, that it was asking if there's a guarantee to get into that Spanish class? And certainly. So the process for entry into an IB program is to complete an expression of interest. And, you know, if you have that completion, what that does is there's an IB coordinator that reviews that, meets with the family along with guidance, and they make sure that all of those students are well-informed around what those courses, what those courses include and what they're a part of. And then, because we want to make sure that kids are successful in those programs. So I think that that answers the questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle. There is a question about the questions and answers. This session is being recorded. The responses to the questions that have been given verbally will not be transcribed. They will be available through the recording. And additional questions, you can go to the idea boards to submit questions. And we will also be submitting some of these questions on your behalf in the, the idea boards as well for response and also for others to have conversations based on those questions and ideas. There's a, a number of comments around walkability and bikeability with regards to Ramsey and Inglewood and as opposed to the transit time. Danny, I'm not sure if, if you'd like to just speak a little bit about transit and walkability and the planning principles and how those all factor in.
Certainly, Deb. So as again, we mentioned at the start of the presentation, we definitely heard from parents during the 2019, the fall of 2019 engagement, that distance travel time from home to school and, and back was an important consideration. And we also, of course, are having to grapple with, like I mentioned previously, some schools being too full and some schools not being full enough. And what that's doing is, of course, impacting access, flexibility, and choice for students. And, and so what we want to do is to try to make that access, flexibility, and choice as equitable across the city for all students. So as we go through the different scenarios, there are schools that, especially those that are very full within communities that with a lot of students, they're very dense in high school students, where the neighboring communities might be very close, but if they're not in the hot zone, unfortunately, they have to be designated to another school that ultimately is going to be further away than the closest school. When we were going through this exercise, though, we did take into consideration the different options. And so as, as I look through the transit impact on Scenarios A and B, we actually have, under Scenario A and B, approximately 75% of students that will either be the same distance from school or shorter distance from school. But that doesn't mean that there are 25% of students that will be further from school. Those 25%, that's the reality of those schools that are overfull. They're living in areas that are very densely populated with students, and now they must travel slightly further. The impact in terms of transit and/or walkability, we believe will be offset by the greater access, flexibility, and choice they'll have to programming within those schools and ultimately set them off on the right foot for their future careers.
Thanks, Danny. And just looking at the clock, I am going to pass it along for wrap-up and next steps with regards to this process.
Thanks, Deb. Give me one moment here. So there were some excellent questions and comments brought forward here this evening. But it's important to remember that there are other ways to share your perspectives as well. So the idea boards will be available until March 17th. If you have some additional thoughts or questions that weren't captured here tonight that you'd like us to consider. And I also want to note that it's really important that everybody complete the online surveys. So that's a really important mechanism for sharing your feedback and your perspectives with us and will be a very valuable data that decision-makers will look at in considering what the proposed plan might look like. So really encourage you to complete that if you haven't already. And also encourage you to ensure that your children are filling out the survey. If, if you're interested in this and passionate about this, your, your children are as well, and the impact will be on them. So we do want to make sure that the student voice is represented. It's very important in this process. So do encourage you to make sure that your children are also completing the student survey. Just in terms of the next steps after this phase of active engagement on the high school scenarios, we will provide one last opportunity for feedback in this process on the proposed plan. So as I mentioned before, depending on the feedback that we gather and the work that is required, we may be sharing that out with you in June or September. I should have adjusted that on this slide. We wouldn't be coming out in the summertime, let's be clear. We know that people have other activities that they're engaged in in the summertime. But it, it would be June or September, we'd be coming out with a proposed plan to share with you and a decision to be communicated no later than December 2021. So I also want to reiterate, I think it was mentioned earlier in the presentation by Darlene, that we may have a situation where we're incorporating elements from the two different scenarios. So it could end up that the proposed plan is a blend of the two, but we aren't introducing brand-new ideas at that stage. So it will be a blend, if that's the direction that we go of what you see existing within, within these two scenarios that we've discussed here tonight. So really appreciate your active participation in this process. And we recognize that change is never easy and that we all have different perspectives and experiences that we bring to these discussions. So the diversity of voices and views makes for a rich and robust discussion. And want to thank you for taking the time to share your thoughts. And we hope you will continue to be involved throughout this process. So thank you, enjoy the rest of your evening, and good night.